I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, free, open, with liberty and justice for all. The purpose of this special meeting is, well, there's two agenda items, the other ones are just approval lists and special vouchers, so basically the main agenda item here is to discuss the road superintendent position and kind of put some kind of a final decision, so.
Tonya told me, she called me yesterday, she said if you need any support or whatever, call her, she'll land me speaking with the board members when we start the meeting. And she said she would leave at eight o'clock.
So what's the current situation then? Where are we at? Do we want Russ to speak? Somebody want to give an update? Because basically the sum of it is, is there's a counter offer, right?
I really don't know what it is. Tonya's the one that knows what the counter offer is.
Okay. Russ, you want to come up in the seat?
I guess where it stands, as far as I know, you guys came with a seventy-eight thousand dollar offer, and after some discussion, my initial request was eighty-five thousand is where I thought I should be. And after talking with Tonya back and forth, I did agree with her, and I offered, or made an offer of I would accept eighty thousand and the use of the company pickup, driving back and forth. So that's where, as far as I know, that's where it was left.
And how far are you from the shop?
I'm about two miles away.
Two miles away?
Yeah.
And I know we had other road superintendents that took their vehicles.
They owned it.
Yeah. Francis did it.
Look at the last issue, we had the last deal.
Yeah, but he drove the business.
This one, man, I got.
That's a different story.
Totally different.
I know there's been a lot of, a lot of discussion and a lot of people unhappy with it happening the last couple of years. I do see the point of it, I understand it. The current, the previous supervisors were able to do it. The current people at Morton, Burley, McIntosh, as well as Campbell County are allowed to do it as well. The supervisor themselves gets to take the company vehicle home. I don't think it would have been a problem for Skyler if it would have been somewhere in Emmett's County, I think people would have been a little more open to that. Maybe I'm wrong. I guess another point I'm coming at with the pickup situation is currently there's no office for the supervisor. He does not have an office at the county shop. John occupies that office. Yes, there is room to put another desk and another chair in there, whatever, but you currently don't have an office, which I feel the supervisor should probably have his office to conduct his business out of, without having to ask John to leave or such or that. So basically that pickup, it becomes your mobile office, it really does. I mean, I work basically out of the pickup now. I think Aaron can speak for that as well, that there's a lot of stuff in your pickup. And even in an emergency situation, such as early morning, late night, whatever it may be, flooding, you know, disaster of some sort, yes, it's two miles, but at the same time, if you can jump in that pickup and go to the site and address the situation, it does save basically a half an hour before and a half an hour after. I don't think it's unrealistic to ask for that, and basically what I'm doing is I was able to come off of my, my previous request of eighty-five thousand, and I came down, you know, with that stipulation that I would just like to do that, I guess.
Would you be open to GPS on that vehicle, plus the other county vehicles, for accountability?
Yes, actually, I would like to encourage that.
Okay.
I think that's a huge benefit. I don't believe it's a personal or a privacy invasion, I don't believe that. A lot of counties do use that stuff nowadays. You can track the amount of area the blade is covering, where they're at, you know, yes, you can, I guess at some point you can kind of spy on, so to speak, you can, you know, make sure they're not taking longer breaks than they should be, you know, that kind of stuff, but I would be open to all the county vehicles having a tracking device on them just for communication purposes, I guess, for the most part. If there is any question, it's as easy as bringing it back up and seeing where that vehicle was at that time and what was being done, and then at that point, if your time card does not drive with the location of the vehicle, then there's some questions to be answered.
And Tonya wasn't supportive of it also. That county, use the county vehicle to the superintendent all the way.
Right.
She said she could, is the HR lady for multiple counties up in that northeastern tier, and she said they all use the county vehicle, all of them.
Yeah, but we just had so much trouble with it before, and I think it just gets abused, and I, I was kind of, I agree.
We just addressed that on the distance that was coming back.
Yeah, no, but even before that, when Nick had it too, you know, people were complaining and all.
Well, now we have accountability if we GPS it.
GPS.
We could say he was here. If they say, well, we've seen a county vehicle, we can go back and check, well, it was there for this reason.
That's just my opinion.
It does protect our county workers, too.
The GPS.
Yes.
And if you want to talk to Tonya for any questions to be answered, other than us two board members that were part of that interview, pick your phone up and call Tonya, she's utmost and openly willing to talk to anybody and everybody. She has no, she has no fan in this whatsoever. She knows nobody. She don't even know Sanders.
Well, like I said, just from what previous experience, even when Francis was there, you know, people always, you take a pic there, always take a pic there.
And he was, he was driving a long ways out there.
Yeah.
I didn't even want fuel tank out at the farm site at one time.
I, I don't think so. Right now, I don't think it'd be an issue. If it becomes an issue, you can address it then, but I don't see it being an issue. Put, you know, you put GPS and everything else on it, that accounts about where the vehicle is going to be, I don't see it being an issue.
If it's a break or take, I say absolutely finish the pickup.
Yeah.
That's my opinion, and I don't want it to be a break, because we need somebody on board. And we need leadership.
I guess my, my main thing about it is that it is just kind of confusing, because I thought it wasn't very long ago when we were discussing these meetings, how that county truck should be going to the shop at night and not leaving until the morning unless it's some kind of special circumstance, and then all of a sudden we're talking about something different already, and I just, that's probably the biggest frustration I've had with this whole process is now, we, you know, the whole part of a probation process is to get a chance to understand if the candidate that we hired is fit the mold you want, and you usually do some kind of pay restriction as part of that probation. If you're not going to do a pay restriction, then there's really no probation, because there's nothing else that they're really restricted from, what I know of. And there isn't anything that says that one day after probation is approved, that we can terminate it or borderline anything anyway that's in the handbook. So there's really no point of having an employee on a probation if you're not really going to restrict pay and use that as a motivation for them to be doing a good job with the idea that they're going to reach that full pay. And so we had a motion, basically, to not restrict pay and pay seventy-eight thousand, and then now we have a counter offer at eighty thousand. I feel like we should probably just stick to our original motion, seventy-eight thousand is over two thousand dollar difference. Use that as a probationary pay and see what happens in six months and we can address it then. If we're looking at this being a long-term position, a long-term solution, which I hope it is, then I don't think it's really that big of a difference on the pay side. So, and then as far as the county truck, I would agree that superintendent historically has taken the truck home, you know, especially the locals, even with the guys over in Lynn and stuff. I really don't have a problem with it. I, I have a problem with some of the hypocritical statements that have just been made over the last six months to a year about how that thing shouldn't be going here, shouldn't be going there, and then all of a sudden, now that a different candidate comes in, now all of a sudden it's just not going to be an issue, so that's.
Let me know, like I said before, the other candidates.
Those are just the issues I have, I think.
And I knew there would be some opposition to it, I just thought it would be better now to try to discuss it before versus after, and I think that would cause or stop some of the trouble, because if it is negotiated, if it is understood, it is what it is, so that's why I brought it out right now versus trying to address it later. Like I said, I just feel that it's a lot more convenient for the supervisor to have that pickup. There again, I'm going to, you know, like I said, Aaron, you jump in your everyday pickup and you take off because you have your stuff in there. That supervisor is the same deal, he has a lot of his paperwork, a lot of his stuff that he needs to do the job in that pickup. So that's my reasoning for it, I guess.
I, I don't disagree with you at all, and I usually have to clean out my passenger seat, so I need to have someone ride with me, because me and my wife makes a comment, your desk is messed, it's my passenger seat, so I, I don't disagree with you, I think it creates a lot of efficiency. I think there's times you're going to be working on the southern end of the county, and you're going to get home at maybe six, seven o'clock, I don't know when, and it's just easier to sit home and start your day in the morning, keep going out to the shop, go back to the job. I'm not disagreeing with that at all. And nothing about that has anything to do with you, I think you're totally right. My frustration comes from this table, and just kind of the way this whole process has gone down with, where basically we had an issue with a previous superintendent that had an issue with something in his file, was over utilizing the county truck in some people's opinion, and was the highest paid road superintendent we've ever had, and now we're going to have that exact same situation. So what was wrong with the last road superintendent, and I guess that's, that's just kind of, and it's a rhetorical question more than anything, it's more just put out that statement, again, it's nothing to do with you and Russ. It's, it's the way some of the stuff has just been conducted, how these, these big issues are apparently not an issue anymore, and it's just getting really, it's just, it's pretty frustrating, so. Russ's counter offer to accept employment at this point would be eighty thousand dollars in annual salary, that's, that's understood then, right?
Right.
Like salary, okay? And basically, with your, your, your proposal is being able to just utilize the county pickup, like to take it home and not have someone go, hey, it's parked in this driveway, and I bought this and that, that's, that's why you brought that up, right?
Yes, yeah.
I don't want it to be misunderstood, like you could use the county pickup like it's your own personal pickup.
No, it would, it would start at, you know, the use of it would start at seven o'clock in the morning, and it would quit at five-thirty or whatever, when it's a moment it stays there, you use your personal vehicle after that, it's not a, it's just a to-and-from tool, basically, is what I'm after.
I just don't want people to misunderstand that, because sometimes it gets understated these meetings, like use of the county pickup, oh, what does that mean?
Right, yeah.
What you're saying is basically you just don't want to always have to take it back to the shop for every darn thing and constantly go there for it every day.
Well, right, exactly, and also, you know, there's going to be situations when you come home at night, you're going to want to look at something from paperwork, and you're going to run back out there because it's in your pickup, you run back home. It, it's just convenience, and I, I think, I think everyone can actually understand that, and I also understand the previous situation, I do. I knew it was going to cause a little bit of discussion back and forth, I just hope that we can come to common ground and agree to it, I guess is what I was hoping.
Just to be fair, I don't think you're being unreasonable.
Well, I can understand that too, but it's going to be heavily scrutinized, so we know that.
Right, and therefore that, again, is my reason, that we're doing it on camera, in front of everyone, to just lay it out there that it is what it is, everyone agrees to it, so that's, that's why I brought it up now.
So I guess the action before the board is going to be, are we going to stick by the original offer, or are we going to, now that there's a counter offer, if you wanted to counter his counter or accept his offer, that's, that was a basic little round.
I'll make a motion to accept Russ's offer at eighty thousand and use of the company vehicle as we stated here, and go from there, see, see what happens from there.
Okay. So a motion for permission on that? Basically, accept Russ's counter offer, eighty thousand dollar a year in annual salary, and just permitted use of the county vehicle in accordance with the handbook.
Yep.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Is there a second to that motion?
Sure.
Seconded by Commissioner Miller. Is there any more discussion?
No, I think I'm going to say no, just because I just don't like the way we handled it before, where you got to take it home, and now we're going the other way again. As far as the pay, I guess I just think, you know, we got pretty good raises when he had, we don't see him more yet. Like you said, there was a grace period in there, get the raise later, that's just my opinion, that's what I had.
Is there any more discussion?
I think after the six month, we should have an evaluation of performance.
Well, that's pretty much guaranteed, that's even in the handbook, pretty much, so.
Right.
I mean, it's understood that there's a six-month probation, but essentially, if you're not doing a pay restriction or something, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, are there any other restrictions other than pay, basically, on probation, like you're eligible for benefits day one, right? And so, and there's really nothing during probation that gives you any easier opportunity to terminate an employee than you would the day after probation, or Sheriff Sanders, or is that?
Well, listening to the conversation, I think we have a county handbook policy, and the policy costs a lot of probationary periods and so forth, and my concern is taking the policy book and throwing it to the side for the exception of one employee, and it's nothing personal here, but I think if you look at history, being inconsistent is what gets everybody in trouble. Okay, so if you accept the counter offer eighty thousand, I have a couple of questions, does that fall within the parameters of the grade and step deal? Marles?
No, no.
So, so you've taken the grade and step that's been adopted, and you've thrown that to the side already. You've taken the idea of placing somebody on probationary and not having a temporary reduction in salary, you've thrown that to the side. As far as the county vehicle, I think a road superintendent should have a take-home vehicle for multiple reasons, just like Russ indicated, okay? But there needs to be parameters and guidelines to follow with that take-home vehicle. My deputies have take-home vehicles, there's parameters, there's policy with that, okay? And so forth. The issue before with the past superintendent was that that take-home vehicle was being taken outside the county boundaries overnight to his residence. That was the issue that was always being discussed, okay? That it was outside Emmett's County overnight, multiple times, that rest of that was the hot ticket that everybody had a problem with. So I think he should have a take-home vehicle, but there needs to be boundaries set on the law, and, you know, and I don't think he would disagree, and that's what he's been talking about. But just to say that there's, you know, take-home vehicle, and nobody knows what those limitations are to it, you got to set those parameters, and then we go back to policy, okay? Policy is a guideline, so what are the guidelines for a take-home vehicle? Okay? There's times that he's going to get called out after regular hours, he's going to get called out on a Saturday, inclement weather, storm, okay? So just to say that it's going to be at his house from five-thirty at, at night till seven AM the next morning, that's not true. There's times you're going to have to go out after dark with that vehicle. There's times you can't go out on a Sunday, a holiday, if something work-related causes him to go out and do that. I mean, that's just common sense, so you don't want to put policies in place or have that conversation where you have very restrictive type things, and the first time it's violated, or it's the first time somebody questions that, like, well, I seen it up north in Hableton on a Saturday afternoon, all therefore need something's wrong. No, if it's work-related, that's fine, you know, that's the thing, if it's work-related. If you have to go and talk to somebody, or go out and look at a roadway, or a culvert, or some other concern related to the road department, I mean, he should be able to do that and not have any concerns about what somebody's thinking about if it's work-related. But the eighty thousand, I don't know, I mean, there's different grades and steps. I'm sure there's a grade and a step in there that that falls into, but what grade and step is that? We're trying to adopt a grade and step for county wide, and now if you get off that, we got to start over again. So, try, whatever, what would be the next grade and step that would be equivalent to that? Each step in that, in that policy or in that grade and step, every step increase is a certain percentage, okay? Whether it's a two percent or three percent, I'm not sure what it is.
Step five.
How much?
Step five. Step five, grade ten, step five, excuse me, I have three pair glasses, is seventy-nine, one eighty-five, I've got it ready. Grade ten, step five is seventy-nine, six thirty-four. I mean, that's so close.
What's, what's the next step after that grade? Grade six?
Grade six, eighty-one, two twenty-seven.
Pardon?
Eighty-one, two twenty-seven.
Okay. I'm interested, Marles, what percentages are between those steps? Do you?
I'm not certain.
It's got eighty-one.
Because what were we looking at? What's that?
Three percent.
Three percent, it, it could be.
From eighty grand to eighty-one, probably three percent.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah. My suggestion is try to stay within that step, whether it's a grade ten or step five or, or step six, but once you deviate from that, you've taken that whole calculation that everybody else's, everybody else's grade step is taken into effect, you've thrown it out the window. Now where does that put you?
So step five would be seventy-nine thousand, six thirty-four, within that chart of close to eighty grand, or eight would be step six at eighty-one, two twenty-seven. So that's at the discretion of the board, and if you'd be okay with this, you know, four hundred hours less, so within that step, you?
Yeah, and I guess I wasn't aware of how the step thing, I mean, I knew.
Do you have this graph?
No, I do not. So I didn't, I mean, I didn't base it on a, a graph, I based it on just a general dollar amount, just like.
What happens after probation, or are you expecting a raise on the end, right away, or what?
I guess that's.
It's up to the board.
Oh, to you guys, yeah, that's.
Yeah, it's up to the board what they want to do.
Well, one of the reasons we're looking at a document, county wide, not only just the road department, but all county.
You see those numbers?
Is that you can use those steps for various things, okay? Once you, you're graded established based on your job description, right? What are your responsibilities, what is your authority, and things like that? Your steps are, what are they, twelve or eighteen steps within a grade period?
Yeah.
Those step increases, which is roughly a three percent increase between each step, those can be increased for various things. Education certificate, do you have a CDL, do you not have a CDL? Okay, when, when an employee starts, or if they start and they don't have a CDL, but yet they gain one later, that maybe entitles them or eligible for a step increase because they got the CDL. Where one employee doesn't have a CDL, they may be at a step five, the guy with a CDL is at a step six. Longevity, have they been with the county three years, five years, ten years, twenty years, makes them eligible every so often for a step increase. You can also use that for probationary periods, okay? We're going to start you at this step. If you have a successful probationary period, you have the option of increasing that to one additional step after a successful probationary period, that's the whole purpose of having that grade and step increase. But it is, there's always been a deduction in pay while on, temporarily, while on probation, and I think to deviate from that is, just throws everything else in, into turmoil with all the other fifty, sixty county employees when everybody else has to. So whether you're starting at a grade ten, step six, or a grade five, graduate to a step six after probationary, but I mean, there's options here, but I think you really need to stay within the parameters of that scale. And setting those parameters with the take-home vehicle, you know, give, give Mr. Lawler some guidelines on what's acceptable, what's not. Now, obviously, if it's work-related, regardless of what day it is or the hour, yes, take the vehicle.
Well, I'm a hundred percent in favor of that. If you take the vehicle, we just use the word a hundred percent, if it's Saturday, Sunday, Monday morning at four.
And, you know, the past issues about whether a county truck stopped at the gas station to get a snack or something, I mean, that's, that's still frivolous, I mean.
That's, yeah, that's cancer.
But again, as long as it's for work purposes, and those hours are going to always fluctuate, especially for someone in that position, absolutely, I mean.
So basically what you're saying, Gary, is you'd rather stay within the dollar amount indicated on this scale versus just like I came in and said eighty thousand is what you're?
Right, because otherwise it throws that whole thing, that whole deal off.
Right, and I, I understand that, I just, I've never seen this before, so I don't, you know.
Didn't you, Tonya didn't show you that?
No, she talked about it, but I didn't actually have this in front of me to go off of.
Because this was adopted for the road department already, right?
Well, didn't Pam Biner have a different guideline or a graph, Aaron initially, and then Skyler brought this in?
There's a couple of different ones, and that was because we never could seem to really nail one down, and we agreed that we were going to have the department heads kind of work on, and that's what they'd been working on, because the whole idea was that they were the ones most affected by it, so, and there's still kind of, there is a work group amongst the departments.
Yeah, we have a work group that's still trying to, because this is adopted for the road department, this is not applicable to the entire rest of the county.
There is no.
I am totally against having two separate grade and steps for the county, that, that makes no sense whatsoever. You need one grade and step grid policy for all county employees, regardless of what agency, department you work in, you need one. I don't know of any jurisdiction anywhere that has two separate grade and step policies based on departments, that, that makes no sense, you got to have it under one.
Can I ask you, Gary, do you know the breakout, or who knows the breakout on percentage in the pie? Road department, what percentage that of the budget? Sheriff's department, what percentage?
Well, that's, that's a question for the audit.
I don't know what you're hearing, right?
You know what it is?
No, I don't.
Okay. You know, to, to no one to justify the, and I'm not saying one department is less, what do you want to say, less important than the other, but what dollars lie in what departments because of responsibilities?
I, I don't know that you could.
Can you use that or not?
Financial dollar amount for the budget, because, again, you're great, you're, whatever employee you are.
Yeah, yeah.
What grade you're putting is based on your job description, okay? What is your job description, what is your responsibilities, what is your authority? Okay? As an employee, you have authority to enforce policy, you have authority to create policy. I, as an elected official, I have that authority. Okay, so my grade is going to be higher than, than Russ, who is, who is hired or appointed, okay? Also, what is the job description and the responsibilities? What are the hours they work, what are, what are the things that they're dealing with? All that stuff comes into the grade part of it, but your step increases are based on other factors. Again.
Yeah, just the work.
Yeah, again, certificate, what kind of training do you have, certificate do you have? You might have two, two employees that have been at the county for equal amount of time, but one has a CDL and one does not, okay? So a guy without the CDL might be at a grade three, you know, or, excuse me, grade, grade eight, step three, but the guy with a CDL has a, has, is one step above that, because he's got a certification or something else above, beyond what somebody else has, that that benefits his job.
Well, and that, again, that's the, that's what the department heads are kind of working towards, because we also had, you know, we have some state mix employees, we have, there's just a lot of different things, and the historic, the history of the Emmett's County Commission is always, people come in, they ask for a percentage increase, and usually through the budget process, you give it to them, and then there were special circumstances, like someone got a different job somewhere, do you want to retain them? Well, we didn't have any kind of program, but what's the best way to offer it to you without just shooting a number out there, not even knowing, you know, well, if I go to this job, a lot of places have grades and steps, and at least you could look at it and be like, okay, that's relatively similar to what we're doing, we could afford this, would you stay here for that? You know, I mean, there's, and that was the whole reason for trying to develop some consistency, not only for budgeting, but for the department heads when they bring people on, how do you start someone versus someone that's been here for a while, you know, how did, and that's how you create the separation, rather than just looking at it and going, you should make five grand a year less than this guy.
Right, and that was the problem.
It's always been that way, and that's why even, even with the two grades and steps, Skyler really moved forward on it, he came from Burley County, was a little more familiar with it, they created one for the road department. There's two separate ones, which. There's two separate ones, which is not the way we want to do it, and we want to move forward with one. But at least we had substantial, where before we were just kind of waiting it. So we're still in a better shape, even though it's not where we want to be. So that's where the department heads are continuing to work on it.
Define it to.
If, you know.
That whole grade and step thing is, is, one of the problems we ran into was you had new employees starting that were making the same as somebody that's been here for twenty-five years, because there was nothing in place as a guideline for any of that. The other thing is, you, you, once you have a job description, whether you're the custodian, whether you're the department head or an elected official, you're, you're classified at a certain grade based on your job description, your responsibilities and your authority. And then you've got eighteen steps after that, okay, which you can move forward in. Now, the steps should not be used as a poll on cost of living. You know, some counties can use that as that, but like we talked about, there's about a three percent uh, increase between steps roughly.
Right.
But the steps should be for issues, okay, a training that's beneficial to your job description, right? Certification. And if you look at the road department, does someone have a, a CDL, not a CDL? Does someone have a certification for training on the blade or some other type of training certificate that benefits their job description? Or ma- makes them eligible? Nobody's entitled to a step increase, you're eligible for one, okay? But if you're on a probationary status, let's say you've had an employee here for five years, but something, they messed up, they're put back on probationary status, they may not be eligible for a step increase because they're still on probationary status.
And even if they have a certification, you know, they're doing the job the way it should be, you won't automatically, because of that piece of paper, get a grade?
A, a step, a step increase is not an automatic thing. It has to go through the supervisor for approval. Obviously, if you have an employee that there's problematic issues going on, and those got to be addressed before you start doing increased steps. Obviously. But that's, that's my good sense worth is try to stay within the parameters of the already established and approved grade and step. I mean, his, the position he's applied for is a grade ten, correct?
Grade ten, right.
To offer a grade, or a grade ten, step four. Is that right?
I think that's step five, I don't have the graph roughly right.
Step four, yes. And he's, he's requesting?
Between a step five or a six and eighty and then seventy, what am I right on, seventy-eight or seventy-nine?
Yeah, a step five is seventy-nine, six-thirty-four. A step six would jump you up to eighty-one, two-twenty-seven.
Good.
And that's an annual salary, so the difference between eighty thousand and step five would be, what, four hundred a year?
Four hundred dollars.
Four hundred a year.
Three hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Right?
Yeah. So, okay. So for the sake of time here, we do have a motion in a second for eighty thousand dollar a year annual salary and permission to utilize the county truck as needed. Hard to explain exactly what you're trying to do, basically use it for purposes of work.
Do we have to make?
So to amend that, I mean, would you be satisfied with the seventy-nine, six, seventy-eight?
Yes, I would want to follow this thing and keep everything.
Yeah, it's going to be easier to probably just fill this motion and make a move on it. I just try to keep it out. So we have a motion in a second. If you're not supportive of that, just say, just vote no for it, and we'll just make a motion. So, so the motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
To kill this?
No, 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 no. The motion is to approve and accept Russ's, basically Russ's counter offer of eighty thousand dollars on the county truck. That's the motion, Commissioner Holmey, and it's accepted by Commissioner Miller. If you don't support that and don't have a different idea, then vote no on this and we'll bring a new one. If that's, if the, the idea is you think this motion is wrong, rather than amend it, it's a steal. So. All those in favor of passing the motion and accepting this offer, say aye. Opposed? Aye. Motion fails.
So now the table is open. Make a new motion, except the, the offer to wage at step five, whatever, seventy-nine, six-three-four, whatever it is.
Grade ten, step five, which for clarification is seventy-nine thousand, six-hundred and thirty-four dollars annually. And.
They ask us, would you be okay with a three percent on the probationary period? Off of the seventy-nine, six-thirty-four, and after the probation, it would be automatically up to seventy-nine, six-thirty-four of an annual, annual salary. There's nothing lost, it's just a matter of, like Gary said, it's in the parameter of the way it's drawn up.
Dan, just to clarify, they're two percent. The steps between are two percent.
Two percent, that's what my initial said.
You know, I, I do understand that. Um, the, the initial offer and stuff, when I, when you guys offered it to me, was to do it just on a regular salary. Um, it was made by Gary, I believe, made that motion. Um, you know, I totally understand it, and I understand where Gary's coming from as well with his, his comments there. Did this would run, the probationary period would actually run over the new year? So you would start, you know, you would end this year? And if I understood it right, we give a four percent raise, come down and refer to step, step, you're right.
Well, if we approve the, the budget, it's not approved yet, that's the, that's the proposal. As of now, that gets approved next month, so.
Okay, so my question, I guess, would be, would, would that four percent be included? I mean, do I?
I think it should be, should be, not, or what am I wrong?
You would give that four percent.
Yeah, I think, give that much approved, right?
It's a cola.
Even if I was on probation.
Yeah, if it appeared there, probably we could.
Okay.
Okay, just to, just to break out, boy, that's an explanation. The idea of the graded step is to create solid numbers. When we do a cost of living, like one, two, three percent, that gets applied to the entire graded step. Not just individual offices or individual salaries, so if for ease of computation, if Russ was making a thousand dollars and then you did a four percent increase, and I'm going to embarrass myself because I'm a four percent. It's off the top of my head. It's like, it's four hundred dollars, right? No, because that's forty percent.
Forty dollars.
Forty dollars.
Forty dollars.
Four hundred would be forty percent. You're, you're right, it's forty.
It's forty bucks, forty bucks.
Right, so it's forty dollars. I knew it was smaller than I thought, because that was one of my brain works. But, so it wouldn't just be Russ that got that. Everybody's graded step would increase four percent. And so if you wanted to give, for example, the initial offer we made to Russ was a grade ten, step four.
Yeah.
If you make that offer, that grade, see, that grade ten, step four increases four percent, probation or not, if we approve the budget. After the probation, if you want to grant some kind of a raise or something, that's how you handle it. But if you handle it within like the grades and steps, and that's why they're only like two percent apart. You want to give a two percent raise, you bump it a step. That's what you do. And that's the reason why the graded step was a good idea, for the sense that, well, what are we going to do for probation period? Pull him down one step, that's all you do, you're done. That's the number, it's already settled, it's approved, it's agreed. The budget is already adjusted annually because of the colas and all that. And that's what you do, instead of just going, I don't know, Russ, five hundred bucks a month, something. I mean, that's, that's always been the way it's been done, and it's a nightmare because you have offices that fall behind, you have offices that move ahead, and that's, so. Getting back to this, yes, if you offer a graded step salary and we do a raise, you will get that raise even if he's on probation, because that's an approved increase to the entire graded step.
The cola raise, it's not a step.
Across the board, that's the rules.
That's the way I agree.
Any other departmental negotiations are supposed to happen within the graded step to create consistency.
Which is.
So, yes, if you, whatever you give Russ, if he is an employee at the time of that change, he will receive that raise no matter what. I mean, with, because of the probationary period or not. Now, once the probationary period is done, if you receive a satisfactory review and if the board wants to give him a raise, then that's where you probably adjust all the steps. And there's never been a raise that I've ever known of that's guaranteed after probation. It's always a negotiating point based on satisfaction of the budget, how the board feels. So there's never been a promise or a guarantee of a raise after six months.
Good.
It's just kind of an assumption, if everything's going good. And usually restricted pay on probation, so that naturally you would just take the restriction away. So that's, so my opinion is, the original motion of the grade ten, step four is still the best practice with the simple fact that that is a probationary pay. He receives the four percent increase, and you would go and give him a step increase after his probation, if you thought so. We're going to split hairs on a few hundred dollars here. And I know that sounds petty on one side or the other, but as a board who handles budgets and more than just one department and one employee, I believe we need to maintain consistency with our abilities to negotiate and try and tend to have the favor in our side a little bit, so. My opinion is the original motion and the original offer is the one we should probably stick with. With the idea of, you know, six months-ish, probably looking at some kind of an increase. If the job is satisfactory, that's the way it's going. I, we're, we're basically right there, because if you wanted to offer seventy-nine, six-thirty-four and then do a three percent reduction, which was the number you were just kind of spitballing, you're literally almost being right at the step we were offering.
You'd be, yeah, you'd be less than seventy-eight.
Right, that's where I'm actually.
Where in the seventy-eight, you don't have a reduction.
The original motion is essentially kind of following those same parameters. You're actually, yeah, if you would give Russ the, the grade five and take a three percent off for probationary, you're right. You'd actually be making less than the first original offer that would be. And if you take into account the four percent cola, if approved through the budgetary process and after the probationary period, you receive a satisfactory review and the board wants to give a raise, you go to that grade ten, step five, plus that four percent increase, he's going to be over eighty thousand dollars in six months. That's why the negotiating factor of this, we're, we're literally splitting hairs.
Yeah, actually, it would come to about two, seventy-seven, two-forty-five.
Right.
With the deduction.
And so I think, as, as, since we're talking ideas and we have an open floor, the original motion that we approved two days ago, and using that as a probationary pay kind of meets this all in the middle, because that's essentially, I like the idea of the probationary pay, pay is exactly what Sheriff Sanders says, it's consistent, sticks to the rules. Even for Russ's sake, down the road, who didn't have to go through probation? Well, no. You run it through that same thing. And if you guys want to be at a step five in six months, if this is working out the way we all think it should be, that's very, very possible. And the one thing to consider too is there's going to be at least two new board members in six months too, so. That'll even give them an opportunity to at least kind of evaluate and weigh in too, so that way they're a part of this whole process. Because right now, you're going to bring in a road superintendent about a month or a half before two new commissioners. And then I don't like the idea of like, well, I wasn't here when he came. Well, it's all going to be pretty brand new and you're still going to be on probation, it's still part of the mix. They're going to be a part of your probationary review, if you get a raise and it's satisfactory to them guys too, then everybody's on the same boat. We have a new superintendent or a fairly new board, everyone's on the same page.
Chairman Manger, um, would you be willing to talk to Tanya?
Can we bring Tanya here for discussion on this, on this graph at all, even though it makes a lot of sense? But just somebody from outside speaking, it's okay?
If you want to do that, fine.
Do you want to take the phone or by the speaker?
Yeah. Got enough court, right? They're like the cartoons, like a pole or a half inch.
Hello?
Hi, Tanya, it's Erin Agar, from the Emmens County Commission.
Hi, Erin.
Hi, we have you on speakerphone right now, we're in discussion with Russ on the acceptance for the road superintendent position.
Okay.
And Commissioner, Commissioner McCarry wants to ask you a question.
I want to ask you, Tanya, on this graph that we got on this pay structure with grades and steps.
What?
And the offer, I'll let Erin explain it to you, what was made. Russ came with an eighty thousand dollar number with pickup use. Uh, our sheriff stepped in on the graph, on the chart that they got on the pay structure. That was introduced into our county, which is, uh, new, it needs a lot of fine tuning, but it's something to feed off of. Uh, we had a motion of eighty thousand, and then this discussion was brought up that there should be a reduction in the salary for the first six months for consistency. And then at the discretion of the budget, at what the board decides to do, the talk is that all the employees would get a four percent increase in salaries. If it all works out on budget. Um, after six months, if they withhold, what is it, every five percent? Or two percent? About two percent.
Well, if you go on the steps and basically what Amy had said is between the steps is roughly two percent. That's, that's, that's between the steps, essentially if you raise or lower a step, it's about a two percent increase or decrease.
So we're concerned at what's fair uh, to make this work for the individual that's being considered and for the county itself, what's fair as far as an offer. Where he's at, we're at seventy-eight, he's at eighty. So it's a make or break of eleven or twelve hundred bucks.
Sure.
Yeah.
So I guess I would kind of, um, I'm not familiar, of course, with your compensation processes. And I know, like you said, this is pretty new, so you, you still need to fine tune it. I don't know if a probationary increase has that standard, or if you wish to make that standard. Um, I also don't know, this increase that you had listed for January, uh, a four percent, you know, is that considered a cost of living? I mean, there's a number of ways you can go about this, as long as you establish consistent practices. And I guess it comes to me like, that's maybe where you aren't struggling right now, because there isn't either lack of consistency because you're trying to find to exist, um, this new pay plan that you are trying to implement. Um, one thing that I've seen done, I guess, in the past, is that when you hire a new person and you are going to utilize a six-month probationary period, that any potential increase would be withheld until that six-month period is up. So even if you were going to do, for example, if you did it this way, if you were going to utilize a cola increase, possibly an increase of four percent for all, um, perhaps you could just withhold that four percent for any new hires until their six months are up. That's one way that I've seen it done. Um, I also, because I work with pay plans quite a bit, um, I always think it's wise to take a number directly from the plan, so rather than, I know the offer, um, that, that, uh, you're discussing is eighty thousand, but I just pull up the plan, drag me in, so a step five is seventy-nine, six-thirty-four.
Yeah.
Um, that would be the closest one to that offer. Um, I always think that's just to maintain the integrity of the pay plan, to use the number directly if you can, um, rather than a rounded number, even though that's easier to talk about.
Excuse me.
So I, I mean, I don't, there isn't necessarily a right or wrong answer, I think it's a matter how, how do you wish to, um, establish these processes moving forward and begin to build some consistency? And maybe there's a piece of that that I didn't fully understand in terms of, um, fairness with others, did you say like you typically withheld a number then during the probationary period or had it left? Is that what you were, with Tanya?
I'm not familiar with it, Tanya, but Erin, as she sat on this board probably the longest of any individuals sitting here. So he could probably explain, explain it thoroughly, like, look thoroughly what you just spoke to us guys.
Thoroughly is an extravagant use of the word for it.
Excuse me.
Basically, what's happened, Tanya, is we were, we're trying to adopt a graded step program.
Yeah.
We, we, we ended up basically with two grades and steps because one department was moving faster than the other, and even though that's not ideal, it was better than having no graded step program at all. So we decided to basically appoint the department heads to form a work group to try and basically create one graded step program they felt they could all work with, because as a commissioner, I would rather the department heads start sorting out how they want to compensate within their departments, because they know their abilities to recruit and retain employees better than we do. So that's how it's been going. And so the suggestion, and what's probably caused some confusion, is that I think we're all in agreement that a grade ten, step five is probably the closest to what Russ was considering to be his starting wage that he would like.
Mm-hmm. What?
And so the suggestion was brought forward because numbers started getting around about, well, we should withhold a couple percent or this or that for probation, because historically, Emmens County has always withheld a little bit for a probationary period with the idea of, once you satisfy your probationary period, you then receive your full wage. So the idea was, was basically, in order to stay consistent with the graded steps, was to offer Russ a grade ten, step four as a probationary pay with, with the, you know, hope, expectation or idea moving forward of, once he satisfied probation, moving into that step five. But then also probably receiving a cost of living of four percent, which is the proposed amount for the budget, which is probably going to actually go over what he was expecting to get started, just, it would be. he was expecting to get started, just it would be six months down the road, it would satisfy probation. And so that's, that was kind of the discussion that where it was headed, and we brought you on here.
Sure, okay.
And so that, I mean, just to fill you in with the details of where.
Yeah.
Because I think, I think some folks always think that, like, we're taking a step back, or it's kind of a demotion, and it's, it's really more of a probationary type scenario. And if you calculate, you know, the idea of moving up one step with a four percent COLA that everybody would be getting, he would be right in or above what he was actually hoping to start out. I mean, you, I mean, and you don't have to give just a total answer, but is that at least a reasonable proposal as far as how it sounds with what we're doing? Like, we're not off-base or really missing a lot there, right?
No, no, I, and I've seen agencies do it exactly as you do for us in the past. I will say that in our current DNA of recruitment, it's becoming harder to maintain those practices, particularly because, you know, it's just, it's kind of a employment structure right now, it's the, it's the employee market right now, right, versus the employer.
Well, Tanya, who's in the room, don't say that right now, he's sitting right here. I, I know what you're saying.
Yeah, and, and, I mean, ultimately, yes, you are not off-base. I, I absolutely have seen this done, that, well, it doesn't do me any time. Um, I just, yeah, the point is it's getting harder to maintain those practices, but, but you're not off-base in, in that sort of thought process. Um, like I said, I've also seen it done where you just withhold any, any other potential increases, so, um, you are able to perhaps be more aggressive on the, on the front end with needing, um, new hires, um, or kind of closer, you know, to their, um, higher expectations, but then withholding any potential increases until that six months. So that, that would be the COLA in this case, right?
Really?
So I think you could do that either way, it's not terribly unreasonable. Um, that's just been my experience, is that I've seen some agencies, um, let that practice go a little bit, because it's becoming harder and harder to hire people, but, but it isn't, it isn't necessarily wrong or anything like that. I think that, I think the point that you would want to perhaps talk about or think about is that, moving forward, um, how do you feel Emmens County needs to maintain that, you know, what sort of processes or procedures or policies do you want in place so that you can establish some consistency? Is that something that you always uphold and still get the people that you want? Um, you know, that, that's a fair question, and, yeah, so that would perhaps be a valuable piece of the conversation.
Sure. And then, I guess to piggyback on that comment, we had two other department heads that stated that they, they currently do withhold some pay during probation, that's part of the probationary period, and so the, the suggestion of reducing pay during probation is to try and stay consistent with other departments as they've been doing it. If, if we're going to change that as a practice, then that's probably something we need to put in the handbook or do something, but, but if we're going to have departments doing that, because that's the way it's been done, it would, it, my opinion, it should stay consistent with that, just so we don't have one department going, well, jeez, you didn't even have a probationary period, now I did, and so we either, we either need to all be doing a probationary period, or none of us be doing it, would probably be the, the better answer to that.
Yes, I don't, I don't think there's a doubt at all. I think a fair question would be, is, is that a practice for those departments that have been utilizing it? You know, has it been working okay? Are they still able to hire the people that they want? Has it any insurance for them? Is the employment market that difficult, where, um, you know, they kind of need that extra, they want to be able to hire them at the full set, and then, um, you know, I had, I have only to see that it just went away for probationary increases because of that, they wanted to be able to hire, you know, at that rate, and, I mean, there was no increase involved up to that six-month mark, it doesn't, didn't mean that that introductory period went away, but I think that we oftentimes, I think we need to come up on that term of probationary period quite a bit, when we are still at a low unemployment state, right? So, um, even if that six-month probationary period, uh, is gone, and we go six months and two weeks into somebody's, you know, new, uh, job, it doesn't, nothing has changed, right, in terms of, they still have to maintain the expectations that you set, they still have to work to that same standard, and it doesn't necessarily mean that, oh, they've got the job forever now, you know, it's, um, we're at a low unemployment state, and so I think it's very easy for us to get hung up on that thought of probationary periods, when I've had labor attorneys saying that we shouldn't even be using that term in North Dakota, um, because it isn't, it's not something that's in law, you know, it is not a, it's not a piece of labor law in North Dakota. There is no, like, oh, you get a free pass after six months, and now your guarantee's up. There is, that doesn't exist. So, um, is it still considered, again, an introductory period, sort of a trial window for everybody? Yeah, you should definitely look at it as that, but that's where labor attorneys have adjusted, uh, to start using a short introductory period instead of probationary period, so that you're not implying to anybody that there is a, um, you know, a permanent commitment for you, if you get past that six months. So for that reason, I'd have some agencies go away from the probationary increase, that the food for thought is probably more than you wanted to throw up this morning, but...
Yeah, well, we're already about forty minutes past, so I thought this meeting would go, so, yeah, it's no big deal, so. Does anybody else have any questions for Tanya? Tanya, do you have any more input other than that?
Um, I don't think I do. I, I think that, I, I don't disagree with what you've been sharing, just, I guess, you know, ponder the other, other food for thought, I guess, in terms of how you want to set policy moving forward, because I think that's kind of what you're looking at doing here, um, whenever you make decisions like this, it does affect future decisions, but, well, go.
Okay. Well, thanks for your input, Tanya, we appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you, darling.
Yep, have a good day.
Thank you. Thank you. Bye.
Okay. Well, as far as the probationary period goes, the only comment I would have about that is that it is in our handbook that it exists, so if you're going to change something like that, I would suggest changing it in the handbook, not for a specific employee, that's mainly just, again, to create some consistency. If you're going to amend the handbook, amend it while hiring someone, it's probably not a good start for us, or for Russ, to that effect, because I, you don't want to be the guy that got the rules bent for you, I'm just being honest, so that, if, if you're going to avoid that conversation, or you want to get rid of it, that's a whole other discussion for a whole other meeting, I think, so. Uh, that being said, that doesn't mean you have to honor that opinion, that's just an opinion. So, there are no motions on the table at this point, because the believe Commissioner Holmes' motion got interrupted, so I don't know if that was a full thought or motion, but I did jot down that you were going to make an offer of grade-ten, step-five, was that still a motion you want to make, or?
Well...
It kind of got interrupted, so I'd just rather just almost ignore it. If you want to make it again, go ahead, but...
So what I'm getting at, okay, if we make an offer of step-five, and then he would, the reduction would go to step-four until the probationary period, am I understanding that right?
I think what you have to do is you have to make a motion of what you want to start paying him as a probationary period if you're going to do that, or if you want to do that, if he's... I, I wouldn't make a motion for a pay-in and reduce it down for probationary period, because there's no guarantee you're going to get a raise after the probation, which is not, I mean, the likelihood of it probably exists, but there's no obligation or guarantee. So I think you should make a motion of what you want to start paying him, and that's going to be the pay, but just, you know...
Step-four or, or...
Step-five. And that's the offer we originally made, and now if I want to consider...
Step-five.
You know, I mean, because that's...
With the class of living, you'll be up over eighty.
If you make a motion...
The budget.
If you make a motion to pay someone and then call it a probationary period, then you're essentially going to be almost putting it in favor that you're going to guarantee a raise, but you have no idea how the job's going to go in six months, unless it's to be fair to everybody. So...
Do you want to say something?
Yeah, I guess I do. I came in here this morning with an offer from the commission for a, a grade-ten, step-four offer of seventy-eight, zero, seventy-three. Um, there was no probation introductory thing involved with that. I came back with that eighty thousand dollar offer, which translated into a step-five, basically, at seventy-nine, six, thirty-four, that I agreed to. Depending on the situation and how you go about it, if, if we jump back to the step-four, then this meeting was basically all for nothing, because I could have just agreed to what you offered right away, because that's where I'm at again. You know, my, my purpose of coming in here was to try to negotiate up to where I thought it should be, and I, I still believe that that eighty thousand dollar offer is very sufficient. I did agree to the seventy-nine, six, thirty-four, just because of Gary Sanders' input, which I totally agree with, to stay within this graph here. Um, that's, that's just my opinion, like, of course, you guys are the, are the ones to make the decision, you know, so that's basically all I got.
If, if I could comment, um, on that grade-in-step, uh, chart that Russ has there, that's a living document. What I mean by that is, if or when the county gives a COLA increase, cost of living adjustment at the end of the year, okay, that's applied to that entire chart. So if the county gave a two or three percent COLA increase beginning January first, those figures on that chart all increase that two percent. So that's a living, that's always staying in line with that. So if the county was to give a COLA increase here, uh, for the 2025 budget, uh, and I believe there's a two percent increase between each step.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, you'd be at your eighty thousand plus come January first, when COLA takes effect.
Good.
So it would roughly be three months and maybe below that.
What's that?
If you're going to start here in October, then it would be three months.
Right, and, and I would be totally fine with that, that, I mean, to, to keep it within the graph, if that works for you guys, um, I would be totally fine with that, but again, that's your decision.
Motions? Discussion?
Well, I guess I would leave it at seventy-nine, six, thirty-four then, for now.
You'd have to make a motion.
I did.
Okay, so you want to reinstate your motion, essentially, of offering Russ a grade-ten, step-five.
Grade-ten, step-five.
Which would be seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars annually.
Yeah.
Is there a second to that? Would pick up a lot there?
Would pick, or you're going to make a motion?
Would pick, yeah. I mean, would use pick up during working hours or whatever. I mean, they're not working hours, but for work.
So we have a motion on the table for offering Russ a grade-ten, step-five, which would be seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars, and permission to use the county vehicle as necessary. Then the confines of the handbook, what we want to say, there's a second to that motion. Is there a second to that motion?
Oh, second.
Seconded by Commissioner McCarry. We're now in discussion. Is there any more discussion to be had on said motion? Is everybody clear on the motion? I just don't like that vehicle deal, but, whatever. Is there any more discussion? Not hearing any. Marlis, would you call the roll?
Emily.
I'm going to say no.
Ollie.
Yes.
Nagier.
No.
McCarry.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Motion passes with a vote of three to two, and so technically, that's just an offer. Are you going to accept?
Yes.
You will accept. So we have an offer, and we can take your verbal commitment in this meeting as an acceptance of the offer?
Yes, starting October seventh, it was.
October seventh was kind of what we had agreed, so. So you're going to be done with, uh, all this stuff?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So do you, you have other work scheduled yet that is going to interfere with anything?
I do have other work scheduled, um, of course, this is a, you know, I have to continue to make a living, so this was a, uh, interruption, I guess, of my thing, so I'm going to have to make some arrangements to make everything go. Um, it's nothing that's going to interfere with this job, of course, it comes first, okay? As of October seventh, this will be my primary thing. I know there's some concern with my equipment, just because it interferes exactly with the county. Um, that won't be a problem, and if things continue to work out, I make through probation, things are looking on the positive side, my intention is to start slowly getting rid of that stuff, and just weeding it out, and be just becoming my full-time, which it will be my full-time, but my, my only job. So there, if, if at any time there is any type of, um, disturbance with, you know, private to business type thing, I mean, I'm open to discussion, but there shouldn't be any type of interference there.
Okay. I think the only other thing to sort out is we'd probably have to get in contact with either Marlis or Gary on some little, or they got to check your driving record, things like that, there's some feedback round type things that we do, so.
Okay.
Get in with them and start moving forward with that, and plan is to see October seventh, unless something changes. It's working with Ross.
Sounds good, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Russ. The only other two issues for this, uh, special meeting is there are claim vouchers for Comstock Construction, which is going to be dealing with the renovations of the courthouse, and then the voucher for, uh, uh, there's a voucher for Karen Holm, who's filling in while the reporter's office is a shorthand, and so there's...
I gave the vouchers to Commissioner Miller, who has...
Correct, and to be clear, with Karen's deal, she's just basically filling it, like, almost like a contract basis more than...
We're, we're just, we're not taking any payroll taxes out, so we're, again, just going to provide a ten ninety-nine, just paying her a straight wage, so much an hour.
Just temporary help to fill in.
So are they all done with this? No, Comstock Construction.
No.
No, this is just a phase, just a phase of the building, so.
Well, it's a big project, at some point, it'll have to get bigger.
What are they figuring, they'll figure here in the end of September, right?
Yeah, I checked it, and everybody had emailed last night at the OTR, um, a revexulation, so, yeah, this would be the second installment.
Right.
Um, they still are on schedule to finish up the interior business at the end of September here.
End of September?
Yeah, in last week in September, the, the exterior steps, that's a different horse, that's, that's a different contractor out of Minnesota, there's issues with getting the quarry stone to match, and things like that, and, and I can have Comstocks come in and give you guys an update, but, um, I think you talked about that at your last meeting, um, so, but what, what we're referring to is the interior stuff, of course, electrical is what they're working on. There was a little bit of a setback with the electrician, uh, but overall, the project is on schedule. So right now, they're working on the fire alarm system in the building.
That's rafter, right?
Rafter, yeah, and then the panels, the outlets, the electrical wiring, some of the wiring is pretty bad, um...
Did they spray new water?
Well, not throughout the entire courthouse, no, mainly the auditorium portion, the basement portion, the stage area, that, that panel down there was a fire hazard, had to be replaced, obviously. Um, and like I explained in my email, there are some things that we cut from this overall project to stay within budget, that we will have to address another day, when funding, you know, becomes available at some point.
Like the kitchen and all that?
Kitchen, and even some of the electrical stuff and some of the rest of the building, that panel outside my office in the hallway is an issue that is going to have to be addressed at some point, too.
That entry that goes up out of the basement on the north side by your air condition or whatever.
Oh, by the kitchen, yeah, the kitchen, that entry, we have a lot of, there's water damage now, there is, talking to Craig, he tentatively has Twin City Roofing coming next spring to do the roof of the courthouse, to address some of those issues, it doesn't pay to fix that, so the roof is, is fixed, and the water, you know, seepage is repaired and so forth, so.
Yeah, so, these two claims here, uh, one here is for Karen Holm, um, it's basically fifty hours, of course, from the last two weeks, if anybody wants to see this, or the voucher is safe with her, twelve hundred bucks there, so. And the other one is for, uh, Comstock, Comstock Construction here, it's just, uh, the phase of the payment process, the total vouchers, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, or, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifty cents, so. Anybody else have any more questions, concerns, issues? Not, undertake a motion, should probably approve it separately, so. Entertain a motion to approve table nine, vouchers from Comstock Construction.
I make a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Mr. Miller makes a motion to approve the payment of Comstock Construction for courthouse remodeling.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Materi. Is there any more discussion on the voucher of Comstock Construction? Not hearing any, I would also favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Voucher approved. Next, the voucher to pay Karen Holm for her services. Commissioner Mager makes a motion to approve. Seconded by Commissioner Holmes, is there any more discussion on the voucher to Karen Holm? Not hearing any, I would also favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Voucher approved. With that, agenda items are concluded for this special meeting.
I might do it real quick.
No, it's not on the agenda for a special meeting.
Can I do it?
Unless it piggybacks a specific item we already talked about.
Grade and step.
That could be an entire conversation with someone who's probably not even qualified to answer.
No, just for the next meeting.
Okay.
I have a county employee called me yesterday wondering who's going to do their evaluation for grade and steps since they're not a supervisor. We can bring it up at the next meeting if you want.
Okay.
Something to think about.
Put it on the agenda for the next meeting. This meeting is adjourned.